Can you adjust the camera table?
Yeah.
Get the table.
And that's your view having to see.
All right, let's go ahead and call the April twenty seven. Notaway County Economic Development Committee meeting come to order. Good evening, everyone. Uh, let's start with the invocation. Who wants to give the invocation?
What's wrong? Want to give an invocation?
That was Paul's. Gracious God our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your love, your patience, your grace and your mercy. We pray that all that we say, do and think during this meeting will be pleasing to thee in thy sight and part.
Amen. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Let's all rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move second.
Got a motion in a second. Well, favoritism by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Uh, is that it? First item on the agenda is the March twenty twenty-three minutes.
Well, they were receiving and adopt.
Second.
Got a motion to move and adopt. We have a second. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Uh, is that it? Next item on the agenda is the draft site consideration packet discussion.
Chairman, if I may, um, I've bailed this document out earlier in the week. A lot of the verbiage should be familiar to the members of the committee because of much of that language was in letter or letters to the governor and his leadership team. We doctored this up to actually be more of a presentation packet. We've, uh, received word that there are some integrators that are being approached by, uh, various poultry interests in, in the, in the area, not just Notaway, but throughout the area. Um, and they asked for a site proposal. And so, uh, not to reinvent the wheel, uh, we doctored up that, uh, proposal that went to the governor's office. Uh, so much of the language is the same. However, we did, uh, add a few things and then we wrote, we rolled the pictures of the site that we had available into the document as opposed to a separate attachment. Same thing with the, uh, with the map of the, uh, uh, Picket Park area. We also provided, uh, contact information relative to the, uh, various, uh, interests of zoning would be Mr. Zodi. Uh, when he came to the war in sanitary sewer, we provided the contact there for, uh, Mr. Van Norbit. Holler, Southside Electric, broadband, so on and so forth. I took natural gas because I, and for other, uh, fuel providers, uh, as a, as a, as a point of contact. Yeah, I would like to point out, and this is particularly to the, to the accounting members. The, um, there's some italics language in there. Pretty much the block, the block lettering, it is what it is in terms of locations and how the site is designed and everything. The italics, the italics language, uh, are basically offers that we could make. Uh, for example, if someone came in and their, their activity required, uh, some zoning, uh, approvals, that the, the county would process that and, uh, and it carried the cost on that, carried the application fees. So that's kind of what that's meant to highlight. So that's, that's basically the document, um, and those, uh, italics issues are basically things for you all to consider. Uh, but staff would certainly, um, suggest that those be offers made, uh, to any integrator to kind of entice them in, uh, to the area. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Absolutely.
Um, just a couple of questions. But first, I'm wondering what the, the committee's, uh, feedback that they're getting from the public is. I mean, I, how's y'all's feedback coming? Does it seem to be mostly positive? And then the other question I have here is on the last sheet prior to the map. I just want to know is, do y'all feel that all the site options, is it being presented firmly enough? If you follow what I'm saying, I know where, where it just seems to say it's an opportunity to have this property or some other huge value. Should we, is there anything we should be stressing further as to options in Berkle Crew? I mean, this is Blackstone, there are other options. We should, another way to word that where things from. That this is not the only option. We're here with, with multiple options. You know, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Your first question, um, I'm not here. It doesn't seem to be on my system's radar because you.
Kind of quieted down and attention didn't talk.
As Blackstone town officials, do you all feel that this is necessarily the best site for this type of facility?
I can, my personal opinion, I think it's a good site. It's as good as any. I mean, it's got as many of the accommodations. Um, and my issue is just on the water side. I think if there were a site in Crewe, I think this would be the kind of thing that would resolve a lot of the crew water issues, uh, either as a replacement for the state facilities that they were leaving or as a way to pay for infrastructure to be built and be able to service the debt a million gallon day user. Again, a million gallon day is an assumption, but I use it like that could pay for a lot of them. I don't know if there's a human cry to put it in Blackstone or not put it in Blackstone. I really haven't heard that. But I do think personally that, uh, this could be something that could be a game changer in that whole melange of, of whatever Prince Edward County is trying to accomplish and, uh, this could resolve a crew, crew issue. But not to say that they shouldn't go there. I do think it's a good site. I mean, it's got everything. It's got the rail. It's got, you know, the electricity and the fiber optics and the airport. I don't know if there's a light location on the upper end of the county. There may be something like that. Um, but I think you can pay for a long water line to get crew and, uh, the states.
But again.
Behaviors then will be, will be detrimental to crew.
All right. And, and to your point, and to you also got the, the, the options. Number one, operating facilities could be in Notaway. They're not going to be within five miles of each other. So you have, I mean, that one location is not going to fit off for y'all. So you do have the potential for the grain mill to come in, uh, that site down there as well. Because you've got the rail spur right there and a lot of that will be on the rail spur. And, uh, that's not how water user, but.
Not a big water user, but if we were ready to work out a deal to get water up to the, upper end of the county to serve it and still the same, it just more debt service. Right.
I mean, you've got, you also got those lumber mills out there. You know, y'all, y'all got that. We got areas that we can look at, um, doing better line adjustments with, for, for Berkle and Crew. And that's what I'm saying. So I'm wondering, and of course, I like the idea of getting the water up there and having a process and planning crew. Only, the only reason why I'm not mentioning Berkle is because of the sewer infrastructure there. That's always present. And I think that would very complicate things, but we can also, i- as a treatment, a new treatment facility potential up there. If this was to move further to Berkle, you see what I'm saying? So we have, we have a lot of options and my concern is are we stressing firmly enough that we, this is not the only option in the county?
One concern I have about the location is at the meeting I learned the, uh, our hatchery in Blackstone may interfere with this by five nautical miles or whatever discussed and this, that's alarming too. I don't want, I don't want to do all the work and we get somebody Indian and they find out. So I think we should be above board and we should be open about that with any prospects that come in. And that's why I agree with Phillip and I think another location and, uh, you know, the water issue might be the elephant in the room, but this could be a way we could get some help.
Yeah.
It could, so it could be two birds with one stone.
I think the grain mill is not successful to the issues. I think it's the hatchery and the processing plant. They definitely have to be five miles from each other.
Right.
So like if a grain mill landed at that location, that's fine. But the good thing about this, all three channels can help spur put it in anywhere.
Right.
So.
And it, you know, I, I don't think council's taking a position that we definitively want or don't want, but I if, if, and I'm, you know, I'm not privy to the information that Mayor Miskovic may have, but what I do know is that, uh, in the event something like this would go to the upper end, I would, uh, I would be keenly interested in the board supervisor's making sure the Prince Edward County doesn't also poach that. Their behaviors are, are unpredictable. So, uh, I think board supervisor would have to ensure that everybody's investments are, are sound.
Yeah.
A little off topic, if you don't mind, shut up about Blackstone. We, we, uh, in, in our February meeting, um, we voted seven zero for me to write board supervisor's letter that we did not do anything to do with the water authority. It slipped, it slipped under the radar, but it was mailed early this week with the chairman board. And y'all had asked us and the council was, were very definitive. They're not interested in water authority. And they, and they would do whatever they need to do to defend their water rights, their customs. I'm sorry.
Um, my position on it is, um, we need to do something quick. And everything's in place. I, I certainly understand your concerns. Uh, what I heard from that lady was they prefer the hatchery and the processing plant at least five miles apart. Not five mile. You know what I mean?
Right.
That's not to say you couldn't put the hatchery on the western portion of the county. The processing plant. It sounds like the processing plant is the one that's, needs to kind of be the front burner. And I'm not sure that you want to put it any closer than where we're even proposing putting it to Blackstone if that's not even too close. But that's got everything in place. So as a county, any development, he gets Blackstone, it's going to benefit the county.
There's a chicken hatchery in the far eastern part of Blackstone already.
Is it?
Yeah. Like the hatchery, am I correct? The hatchery in the processing plant must be at least five.
That's what I've been told about.
So that's what I'm saying, that the processing plant, this may not be a viable option. So that means we'd have to work for feeding, but for a female, if it, a female, absolutely.
Or another hatchery or whatever. But, uh, we do have a, a long standing relationship with the hatchery. It was Brickland, now it's Hendrix.
Yes, right.
And, uh, they've been in Blackstone for, gosh, they've been around there thirty years over there previously.
I mean, this was originally proposed to go in Crewe, but twenty years ago. And, uh, the only bad thing about this is like, you know, nobody knew the five mile radius until they stepped at this site. And it was like, whoa, that was a shock. That's like, all right, got, got a backup and punt. But yeah, to your point, we got to figure out something quick. I mean.
Certainly submitted, I would think. And then I, I don't know if there is a site in Crewe. Is there a hundred acre site?
Does that sound, does that?
Not that's, uh, publicly available, but, um, we can, not, not that I'm aware of. On the, on the topic of, of, of water, I think that any, um, anywhere in Notaway where we build a, um, uh, facility that uses a million gallons a day would benefit everyone because of the, that would help cover the capital expenses of, of Blackstone. And that's a, that's what we all need to do is focus on getting those capital expenses as low as possible so that the water rate's going to, can, uh, be a, be as low as possible. Um, the other thing that we want to also consider is proximity to, um, uh, potential, um, uh, gas lines. Uh, was there the, uh, the prospect of a, of a gas line about ten years ago?
It's been, it's been some years now. Might, might reach out to the gas lines. They're miles away. They're miles away.
Gotcha.
Uh, and no immediate plans to bring anything this way from either, either side.
Okay.
E- either direction. That's why I, you know, I felt like, you know, to be honest and straightforward with folks, um, put that out there. We don't have natural gas, but we've got some other alternatives. Talking with one of the other fuel providers and, uh, the, the, the mayor Green and I were talking before the meeting. He asked me, he said, well, what's the difference? And natural gas, propane are the same. It's the delivery. It's the, it's the transport that drives the cost differential up. Uh, hopefully we could leverage that rail spur to make something happen, make the, get the larger whining in. As opposed to a small tank, uh, delivery. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just kind of made some notes here. To Mr. Ward's first question, uh, this summer and I went to the soil water conservation dinner the other night and we met with one of the, one of the poultry producers was there and got to talking to him. And I actually showed him all the photos that I had sent out to you all. And they were very, very appreciative of, of the effort that was being made. Okay. So, um, this was done basically as a request that came in from one of the growers. Their, the growers are, are having a meeting tomorrow and they're going to be looking at possibly a group of, uh, these type, like proposals like you've gotten from our view this evening from at least two other counties. Okay. Uh, so kind of wanted to be in that mix. The, um, uh, so they're meeting tomorrow with the plan of taking it to an integrator on Monday. So the timing element here is, is, is pretty crucial.
I'm sorry, just, just, just got hung up on that. I mean, I think we were all in a roundabout way, a little bit excited about the potential that this could do, bringing all three here possibly, but will we be comfortable presenting this, but also indicating that there's a second package proposal coming? With more definite, um, like you, you'll, you'll places there, the potential where, um, that Berkle may have with the rails for, Crew did may have with the rails for, and we can indicate those in there. This puts something in their hands. Keeps, keeps Notaway in their face. You know, I mean, but.
Well, that was, and, and that was kind of leading to my, to my next point, my last point, which was, and it was something that, uh, Mayor Green also said was the, the attempt to get prospects to come in. Once you get them in, you can show them a lot of things.
That's right.
Okay. We did, we didn't want to go into details, but we did one earlier this week and we showed one prospect, three sites. So, you know, once you get them here, you can take them around. Let me see. I'm looking at the language to see if we can tweak the language a little bit. Appreciate the opportunity to have this property. How about, or some other for which, um, a similar packet is being prepared?
Yeah, you can just say, or, or like right there, what is it after? I'm sorry.
It's on the last page.
An opportunity to have this property.
Or some other.
Or.
For which a similar packet is being prepared.
Which a second, uh, proposal was being, uh, prepared, something like that. Second offer. Now, how do you want to work that? Yeah.
The question is how fast are you going to be able to get that other package together?
Well.
If they're meeting tomorrow and presenting it Monday.
It's not going to happen.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's not going to happen. But if they show any interest in any of this here, they'll also want it. They also understand there's a second packet.
Or some other for which a packet. Where's the packet can be prepared? Okay, so.
Or is being prepared.
Well, okay, we can say is being, if we have, do we, I mean, do we?
Do we have identified sites is the problem?
We have. The wood yards, um, and I, I would say, um, any development along the, the, uh, it's in the wood yard. Which one are you talking about? Uh, the one, they got one of those outside the roof there. Well, one's, one's, one's in use.
One's in use. It's a distributor.
That's right.
He's bringing in wood products and distributing.
And the other one's about forty acres.
Okay.
And we, in fact, Ted and I met with, and Ben met with, uh,
And Greg.
Andrew and Greg the other day.
Yeah. So, um.
So are those usable?
Certainly usable. I, uh, there's some limitations like any other property.
One of the issues that I, that jumped out at me, Susan, was the monitoring wells and stuff. They have like two monitoring wells there.
But that's now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's going in the right direction. Um, okay, so, um, let's see, we could say a, or some other, uh, for which a.
Would it be better instead of saying being prepared, can be prepared? Not only if they say, well, this doesn't work, but we have some property that we looked at a map and we, we'd like.
I mean, to, to, as far as I'm concerned, I, I think it's fair to say if we're discussing it, it's being prepared. That's in the preparedment state, right? Is that fair? It's being discussed, we're identifying sites. Or, I mean, whatever you all think. I just want to keep your attention.
Well, the one, the one thing to do would be, okay, let's, let's, back from it. So the first letter was written to the governor. We never said a second letter was coming, but a second letter came. When the second letter, we never said a third letter was coming, a third letter was coming. Um, this could be something where we send this one and a couple of weeks later, we send another one.
I mean, from the context you've had, is anybody like shovel ready tomorrow? Or we months out minimum?
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Right. So what's it going to hurt if in two weeks, we put together a couple more sites and we say, hey, you know, Phil has some down there in Crew. I got some in Berkle. Maybe you guys identify more in Blackstone. And we said, well, shit, here's three, four more.
Well, then you all.
Sites that are forty to a hundred acres that, even if we don't own them right now, and that's one of the things I called Greg about yesterday. I said, the current mapping we want is what's, or governmentally owned, if you will. But I told him, I said, there's plenty of land that's out in the county that's available. It's going to cost us to acquire it, but the land's available and there's people willing to sell it for the right price. We shouldn't just be mapping what we own. We should be mapping what's potentially available.
Well, one, actually, I'm, I'm thinking about how to, how to springboard off of this one, which would be, um, just the thought, send it as it is. In a couple of weeks, say, hey, remember that last proposal we sent you where we said some, some other property? Here's another property, you know, and then, and a couple of weeks later, here's another property. You then just kind of keep counting.
How many acres is the airport out there?
I'd have to look into that. Pull up with V I S.
Yes, I slipped my line.
And how much y'all got around the rail yard in, in Berkle Towne?
In Towne? I only got one square mile. I mean, I ain't got, just outside Towne, there's, there's a fair amount of land. But all most of my land.
Old Henry and Dutch Town, right next to Colonial, next to the, uh, gravel pit.
Yeah.
Look, so there's a huge chunk right on that corner, right off of four six.
There's a good amount of land running down three sixty. Um, and four six. I mean, and that's one of the things, uh, Phillip and I talked about. Why are we not ever looking at? The frigging bypass. You got two bisecting highways across the state.
I think about what, what fifteen, eighteen thousand, right by the, uh.
Yeah, fifteen, eighteen thousand. I mean, I've got three phase power there. Sewers, you know, whatever the prison allows, but water is the issue. And that's what I've been, you know, beating the amber about for two years now.
Yeah.
If I don't get a water line, I really am out of the dark with everything. Crew's in similar situation. I mean,
I'm just.
You, you guys, you're going to hit your backs a lot sooner than you want to as well.
I mean.
But my understanding.
Well, Phillip. Greg, y'all, y'all got a better background here than we do. I mean, that, just as far as me, I would lean on y'all saying, you know, what do you think? I'm trying to switch on this bottle, put a lot of pressure on you, but you know, that's, that's what he's here for.
That's the run line. You know.
In the absence of, of a designated site, I would, either you can or could be made available. You have to turn it in somewhere, but I get it. I mean, uh, I think there's going to be other, especially for the line issue. If a portion or at least a large water user portion of it could be in the upper end of the county, we could still benefit, but so everybody could benefit, you know?
Both the towns would benefit from that too.
Okay. And, uh, but I would say could or can be, give what you got to have in and then, yeah, let them know that additional site maybe could be made available. But if they do call you, you want to be ready. Oh, yeah.
Hold on, let me call you next month.
It's ninety-five acres for crew.
Seventy-five.
Ninety-five.
How available is the?
We all got full people renting monthly or something?
No, we've got several lines.
But the town owns it, correct?
The town owns it, correct.
So that's not even an requirement. That's already there.
And if she's open, so that's, that's close and prepared. It just, and there is certain utilities there. That could be upgraded to three things. Pretty, pretty, that's a, that dominion of Southside, you know?
The airport would be Southside.
South of the country. I, I just don't want to sound too desperate in whatever we send them tomorrow or tonight or. You don't want, you don't want to be like the guy that's, you know, in bed noses from selling cars. Guy comes in and he's like, man, I just need a car. You know, the, the dirty salesman's like, oh, well, I mean, I'll give you the, we'll give you the junkery over there and nobody else is interested. You just want a car. You don't care what you're getting. That's what we're going to give you.
I don't.
But I don't want it to be like, oh, my God, please, 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 please look at us. We want to put a good solid package together.
I don't think this sounds desperate. The only thing I was concerned about was that specific wording, letting them know that we have other options available. You know, throughout the county. And that can be made available. Yeah. But other than that, I'd be fine. I, I, I know we may have a glitch with that, but you never know. Person might say, hey, you know what? Perfect time for us to say, well, we'll hit it somewhere there. Perfect time to get out.
So John, what about this one? Where it says, or some other?
That's what we're talking about, changing that sentence. No, I have this property.
Or some other.
That can be used. Well, okay, what I had was, okay, it's an opportunity to have this property or some other for which a site consideration packet can be prepared. You might, okay. So I guess there's a consensus that after the words, or some other, we insert for which a site consideration packet can be prepared, be invited.
Is there anybody that's absolutely opposed to that?
Go ahead, I'll fill it tomorrow morning.
No, I want to get it out tonight.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll doctor this up right here and pop it out.
Just let me know, I can just get it on my way home.
I'm going to see what you do right here.
Um, anything else on the draft site consideration packet? Mr. Cops, can you sign it there, everybody?
I'll send it over.
All right, ten full. Uh, next item on the agenda is the county, county land use spreadsheet update.
Yeah, um, I added some things. I haven't completed all the county stuff. I wanted y'all to kind of have a copy. Um, I would really appreciate if the towns, um, could look over those. Right, and, uh, the chair and I, as you mentioned, we, we're talking about the history and I think it, it would certainly be a reasonable idea for you to incorporate, uh, state and land. That might be something we want to reach out to a realtor or a regional, uh, realtor business or something to provide us with that information with state and land. At least we can, there's a source. That would cover the whole county. But I added columns up there and, uh, just, I did add the debt service, uh, but I can do that later. I mean, if we still want to pursue that. But if y'all could send me something, because I don't know your journey or anything like that, uh, that'd be, that'd be great.
Someone just jumped out at me, uh, if I'm in this chair.
Absolutely.
Um, Trap River in Crewe. It's nine point seven acres. It's on, it's on the back, or if he pages to the back page one, nine point seven acres in. Is that Cruz? Is that Cruz land or is that Nottaway land?
I believe that's, uh, in Nottaway.
On the left hand side, when you go into the trail park, you have a plan to road and a train track?
Actually, don't remember because Trout River and, um, and, uh, Lookstone did some back and forth. Trading, yeah.
Cause that right there, cause I didn't think there was any more land available around there for you to add to the, uh, industrial park.
I don't think that this is showing available land. Is it?
No.
No, okay. Now, this is just land that's so. Publicly owned. Well, this isn't even publicly owned. It's a.
Oh, which one? Trout River?
Trout River is assumed owned by Trout River now. Or is, do, do we still have a, uh, does the county still have some sort of a agreement with them?
We did.
We did? Okay, so it is still publicly.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, that's what I, that's the other thing that I'm trying to figure out is. It says Trout River. Do they have any ownership in this or is this land available?
They. Mr., uh, Mayor Missick, they bought the land in the industrial park? I believe they bought the land. That's what I thought. We have some, um, economic development grant obligations.
Let's say there was some strings attached for manpower and.
How much, how much, how much of their product they bought from other Virginia companies? I think people were employed.
Cause the one right below it too, fourth, going in fourth. I mean, you're talking with twenty acres of, I mean, out there in industrial site, I mean.
Right. I think the, the industrial park is pretty much used up now with, uh, between those companies, um, and, uh,
Lookstone gave you a start time on when they're gonna start actual.
Oh, they're still going through the processes, but it's hopefully soon.
Moving forward.
Right. Yeah, it's, um, mining is one of the most heavily regulated industries.
Yeah. I knew they were going through the Army Corps of Engineers. I just didn't know if they had got past that hurdle.
And we're still there turning through D E T right now, aren't they?
I believe so.
All right, bear with me, guys. I'm sorry. Let me back up in one. All right. Something blocked my ears. I just kinda felt like he might, I, I wasn't listening to what he was saying. I, I mean, cause I was looking at this. Maybe I missed something. What is this sheet?
This is the sheet that we were talking about, um, all the vacant lands in the unincorporated and incorporated areas of the county that are publicly owned.
But you said vacant.
Well, the land that I, I, let me dig that.
Okay.
It's remove the vacant part.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so it's all the land is publicly owned. But that's why I had that column say vacant.
So, and I guess so the other thing is, is this just for our knowledge or is this something that's available? That, that's.
That's just, it's a working document. That's just available at this point in time.
But you need to know on here, according to our conversation yesterday, we, the towns need to be identified. What has water, sewer, electric. So.
Services and things like that.
Two quick things. And this is on the Burkeville Library. The address you have listed is the old building. That building is currently vacant. Because I'm not gonna step into the other towns business. I'd appreciate it if they stay out of mine, I'll stay out of theirs. That's a good working relationship. We know where each other stands.
Chair, is that, uh, we're talking the one eleven fourteen, uh, Agnew Street?
The one fourteen Agnew Street is currently abandoned or vacant, not abandoned.
Okay.
Uh, the town owns it, but the library is located at two twenty-four West Nunley Street.
Two twenty-four West Nunley Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And that has obviously water, sewer, internet, telephone, electricity, I think.
Okay, I'll, I'll amend that. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
As I had, I just wanted to provide all of that. Kind of starting from a formal start, but I was continuing with the county, the county on the unincorporated side.
Um, one more change.
Yes, sir.
Burkeville Elementary School. Why are you laughing? It's five oh, five oh seven Ingleside Street. It's no longer Miller Street. Name changed last month. It's on the last page. I just should have told you that.
Okay, the.
Second last page.
Okay, and it's now what? I'm sorry.
Five oh seven Ingleside Street.
With an I or a E?
With an I. I N G L E S I D E.
Okay, but Burkeville, Virginia, two three nine.
Yes, sir. Everything else stayed the same. I think Mayor Vuskovic brought this up last month. Do we know what the county school district's planning to do with that land? That's a big piece of land sitting there. And it's got town utilities running through it. It's got electric. It's got fiber optics. Elementary school. I mean, I like Rodney Reynolds being down there, but that's a waste of a building. You got a gym, the school district's begging for a new gym. Pretty gym. I don't think it'll suit the high school needs because it's just, it was built as an elementary gym. Uh, which is unfortunate, but I just hate to see that facility continue to sit there.
Can you, uh?
Twenty acres there.
Would y'all wanna send a letter to the school board, the economic development committee, send a letter to the school board and ask them what their intentions are?
I think we'd be crazy not to try to find something to go in there. I had a former councilman who talked about putting a computer lab in there, something. Than just leaving it sit.
I mean, no, we're asking for an explanation.
And I'm not talking tearing the building down. Let's find a use for it. But you got twenty acres there. We're talking about needing acres for different projects. It's, it's just, can be crazy. Taken away and we're using an office.
Get the plan for it. And then they get that, uh, facility to use study. Twenty thousand dollars that study. Got some recommendations in there.
I mean, I, we've got this. Cruz got some property, Blackstone. You guys ever get the old school cordoned?
No, I think we're negotiating.
I mean, it's, there's three towns with school properties sitting down on that. Land in town that's got all utilities to them and we're just sitting on.
And just, uh, another, I guess, the public school, uh, the, uh, Amelia, Amelia and Ottawa Technical Center. And I guess it's actually still in Ottawa now. Not yet. It's, it's still Amelia.
We don't think, y'all, y'all want someone to ask them, but put it on the record. You know, wish y'all's intentions. Y'all had a spaceship utilization study. What's your intentions? This, and put a specific, uh, item on there. You know, I guess we can ask the what-if scenario with Bo-Tech, you know, what their intentions are with that. If for me is to pull out because all intentions is late that way, then Amelia will pull out. I think it was just a little late pulling the trigger this year. I think February was some sort of a deadline. So, but I mean, we're talking about structure that is sitting still that we could need to get back on the tackle somehow, some way.
That there's utilities running through.
Yeah.
And we're saying we don't have viable places to put a hatchery or a grain plant. I mean, elementary school's probably not a good spot for a grain plant, but, or a processing plant for that matter, but this is one of our topics is on the table, but we're sitting on at least three properties in three different towns that have buildings that we're not using for anything. It's just ridiculous to sit on.
But you also got, and y'all may remember this more than I do now, because the schools built those gyms for the shelters, so that's something we gotta climb up on.
That's what I said, not tearing them down. Finding use for them.
Yeah.
Is there a computer training program that we could put in that?
Strictly house the rest of the building. Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. It probably needs some refreshing, you know, fresh coat of paint, polish the floors. And that's, I mean, that's, that's it.
It must have all the time to be looking for something to paint for.
Um, I move that we write a letter to the school boards and request a confirmation study. We also would like, um, to know what their plans are for the, for Burkeville Elementary School.
I'll second that.
Uh, do we want to add? Phil, do you want to add your properties?
Uh, sure, why not?
You got an old maintenance shop.
Well, we'll just, uh, why don't we just, uh, amend it to say, uh, all the properties, uh, uh, indicated in the, uh, in the study.
Got a motion to write a letter to the school board to get a copy of their facility use. Um, study and ask them what their plans are for their properties. That are not in use, right. Thank you. Uh, got a motion and a second, all in favor, say goodbye saying aye. Anyone oppose? I just have it. Uh, next item on the agenda is a strategic plan development. Mayor Vuskovic.
Oh, sure. Did we want to, uh, work on the, uh, the SWOT analysis? Is that what this is for?
That's what's on the agenda.
Perfect. Well, let's, uh, let's do it then if everyone's agreeable. The SWOT analysis that we, uh, we talked about? I'm sorry, I'll use the whiteboard. Sorry, councilman.
Okay, so I think, uh, at the, um, two months ago, we, uh, we talked about, um, um, we just briefly talked about some, uh, uh, issues, concerns, very briefly talking about what economic development is, things like that. So let's, uh, start to go into the, in the initial steps of the planning process with a SWOT analysis. Um, I guess most of you are familiar with a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Okay, perfect. So, um, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats.
I'm.